Okay, so we are here today for our special meeting on deputy gangs in the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. This is a special meeting of the Los Angeles Sheriff's Civilian Oversight Commission. As many of you know, we have spent many months, indeed years, examining the impact and role and indeed the alleged existence of deputy gangs in the Sheriff's Department. And this special meeting slash town hall is an effort for us, for us to really try to hear from the public about the impact of deputy gangs on public safety and community trust and accountability. So we really want to thank everyone for attending today, for taking time out of your busy schedules, especially around this time of the year, to talk about this critical issue in Los Angeles County. So with that being said, Ingrid, can I ask you to take the role?
Absolutely. Commissioner Bonner? Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Giggins?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Chair Ochen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Rubin?
Yes, here.
And Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Ingrid, and I just want to note that this is a special meeting, and so this is not a meeting that traditionally all of the commission would attend, but because we do have so many commissioners that are interested in hearing from the public about the impact of deputy gangs on public safety, accountability, transparency, and law enforcement legitimacy in LA County, we needed to schedule this as a regular meeting slash special meeting of the Civilian Oversight Commission meeting. So I just wanted to sort of emphasize and underscore that that's maybe the reason why some of the commissioners are not present today, like Commissioner Bonner, Commissioner Thompson. I want to turn things over to Commissioner Leo Rubin, who has chaired the Ad Hoc Committee on Deputy Gangs and has really led the commission's work on this issue. Once Commissioner Rubin gives some introductory remarks, I will then introduce some guests, will give some comments on their work exploring the existence and impact of deputy gangs within LA County before opening it up to public comment. When I open it up to public comment, I will let people know how they can contribute to the conversation. But before we get the meeting started, I want to sort of talk about our code of conduct, right? This is a forum that is designed to really have important discussion, dignified discussion about critical matters of public safety, right? And justice in LA County. And so we want to have this conversation in that spirit. So I'm going to go over a couple of abbreviated rules for the purposes of this special town hall meeting of the Civilian Oversight Commission. So one is that speakers must cease their time when, cease speaking when their time has ended. They need to speak to the subject of today's town hall, which is deputy gangs. We need to remain respectful and refrain from profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or abusive statements. We should be respectful of the views that are expressed by speakers, staff, and commission members, and do not disrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting. A person who is engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being muted and removed from this meeting. And I will absolutely not hesitate to interject if I sense that comments are getting to, or going in the direction that violates these rules. So I hope not to have to do that, but just wanted to make sure we went over the sort of rules of the road for today's town hall and meeting. So with that being said, Commissioner Rubin, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you very much. As so many people know, deputy gangs have existed in LASD, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, for over 50 years. Finally eradicating them after 50 years is long overdue, to put it mildly. The commission, the community, the Board of Supervisors are determined to finally rid the Sheriff's Department of deputy gangs. As Chair Ochen has said, this meeting tonight will help to do that. For the last three-plus years, the Deputy Gang Ad Hoc Subcommittee has worked at crafting a policy that would end deputy gangs. The sheriff unfortunately has refused to adopt that policy, sometimes saying that deputy gangs no longer exist in the department or that they're really not gangs, they're social clubs. The community with firsthand experience knows that's not true. As Chair Ochen has said, it is important for us to hear from the public. You can do that tonight during the public comment period, or you can submit written comments by email As I said, this is a critical moment for the Board of Supervisors to finally take decisive action to address the scourge of deputy gangs and the conditions that lead to unchecked hostility and violence towards communities policed by the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, particularly Black and Latinx communities. Through its September 28th, just several months ago, motion titled "Measures to Eradicate Deputy Gangs and Create Stronger Civilian Oversight and Checks and Balances Over the Sheriff and Sheriff's Department", the Board has affirmatively tasked the Civilian Oversight Commission with soliciting public comment and input and developing recommendations for a holistic approach to address the issue. We hope to use tonight's forum for that purpose and propose new and necessary solutions that meaningfully change the relationship between the county, the sheriff, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, and the public. We urge all of the members of the Civilian Oversight Commission to consider and include the recommendations made this evening as part of the report back to the Board. I want to thank members of the Ad Hoc Subcommittee who have worked hard and have shown incredible insight over the past three and a half years, and it has been a pleasure to work with them. I want to thank Sean Kennedy, one of the speakers tonight, JP Harris, and of course, Rob Bonner. With that, Priscilla, I'll turn the meeting over back to you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Rubin. So we, as I said, we have four speakers today. Each of them will speak for about seven minutes. Once those speakers have concluded, I'll actually invite them to be in conversation with each other. We'll take commission questions, and then we will have a public comment. So that's the agenda for the rest of the meeting. So first, I want to invite Cerise Castle, who is a journalist and author of a series on the history of deputy gangs in the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, which was published by NAC LA. The series, I would commend it to everyone who has logged on today and to members of our commission. It is thorough, it is in-depth, and there's much to be learned from what she has uncovered. And so because of the in-depth nature of the reporting and the sourcing that was done as a part of it, we invited Ms. Castle to speak with us today. And so I want to begin with you, Ms. Castle, to invite you to talk a bit about what your findings were during the course of your investigation.
Thank you so much for having me. And I just want to give a quick land acknowledgement. I am joining from unseated Kickapoo territory. The aim of my presentation is to discuss how the culture inside LASD has allowed gangs to come to be and continues to allow them to grow and multiply. Deputy gangs are just a symptom of a broken system. We're discussing things tonight under the lens of deputy gangs, but these issues do exist outside of the deputy gang structure too. Next slide, please. So just quickly, I'm going to define a gang for you. Next slide, please. A gang is anything, a group of three or more people that has a common name or identifying sign or symbol. Next slide. Has one as its primary activities, the commission of a long list of California criminal offenses. And finally, next slide. Group of three or more people whose members have engaged in a quote "pattern of criminal gang activity", either alone or together. Crimes in the case of deputy gangs, we're talking about things like murder, rape, kidnapping, money laundering, falsifying police reports, and so on. Next slide, please. Now, Mean Girls is a classic example of a clique, right? It tells the story of a group of high school girls who bully each other and other students. Next slide, please. Deputy gangs are definitely not a clique or a subgroup or fraternity. They are illegal criminal gangs. They are participating in criminal activity against community members. They have the same tattoos, and they use hand signs, as you can see in these photos. Next slide. So let's go over the main findings of my reporting. First is there are at least 18 gangs in LASD. The first was discovered after the 1970 Chicano Moratorium. That was a gang by the name of the Little Devils. Law enforcement gangs are not unique to Los Angeles, but we are home to the first known ones. Deputy gangs are responsible for the death of at least 19 civilians here in LA County. All of the men that were killed by the deputy gangs were men of color, and four of them were in the midst of a mental health crisis. Next slide, please. LA County keeps a list of litigation related to deputy gangs. I created a database at NAC LA of deputies alleged to be associates and tattooed members of these deputy gangs. I was inspired to do such by systems like CalGang, which is widely used by law enforcement here in LA County. The bar to get into CalGang is very low. It classifies people based on family members where someone may live or who they associate with. And if you are arrested and you are in CalGang, it generally comes with enhancements to your sentences, which means more jail time. Now, the deputy gang database acknowledges deputies and upper-level management who were present or oversaw illegal activities as associates. Those who have been identified in court cases or through self-admissions or tattoos are categorized as members. Tattoos for these deputy gangs are given at so-called 998 parties, and they are named after the code for an officer-involved shooting. It is alleged that to enter some of these gangs, a deputy must kill a civilian. Litigation related to these deputy gangs has cost LA County at least $100 million, and all of that was funded by taxpayers. Next slide, please. Now, there are various government agencies at the county level, state level, and all the way up to the federal level that has known about deputy gangs for decades. Next slide. However, there hasn't really been any meaningful investigation or significant policy change to address this issue. Next slide, please. So let's take a look at some patterns of violence against community members. Next slide. So these are things like raids, illegal detainment and arrest, physical assaults, planting and manipulating evidence. Next slide, please. Harassment of victims' family members and members of the press, such as myself, and of course, the killing of community members. Next slide. In the jails, deputy violence looks like beatings, sometimes to the point of death. Rape, next slide. Tasers to the genitalia and OC or pepper spray to the genitalia and eyes. Next slide, please. Now, there are patterns of deputy violence and harassment against other LASD personnel as well. That's things like mocking them on social media, denying them promotion, subjecting whistleblowers to psychological exams, threatening whistleblowers with murder, pointing guns at whistleblowers, doing drive-by shootings on whistleblowers' homes, and of course, placing dead animals on personal or county property of whistleblowers. Next slide, please. This is an example of an Instagram post. It is a picture of a rat riding a motorcycle. It's directed at a Bandidos whistleblower. It says, "Wanted to be a Bandido, but I'll settle for the Rat Crew King." And then next to it below is a photo of a dead rat that was placed on a whistleblower's driveway. Next slide, please. I want to quickly show you how this culture metastasizes throughout the department. So we're going to take a quick look at a case study that I've prepared. For some background, once deputies graduate from the academy, they move on to the jails where they do the next part of their training, and then they move on to patrol at a station. There are at least four known gangs that have operated inside the LA County jails, the most popular of which is the 3000 Boys. So in 2010, Christopher Lee Wilder's jaw is broken by Deputy Jay Brown inside MCJ. In 2011, Deputy Samuel Aldama beats Alquan Jackson, who was incarcerated inside MCJ. Both of these deputies are alleged to be 3000 Boys associates. Next slide, please. In 2015, January, Brian Pickett is killed by Deputy Renee Barragon and Ryan Rothrock. April of 2015, Taishon Gaither is shot by Jay Brown and others. Jay Brown, as you can recall from the previous slide, was involved in an assault at MCJ. He is alleged at this point to be a Spartan associate. Next slide, please. January 2016, Samuel Aldama, alleged to be a 3000 Boys associate in the prior slide, and Mizrahi Arago beat and falsely imprisoned Sheldon Lockett. At this time, both deputies are tattooed executioners, and you can see their tattoos on that photo there. Next slide, please. In March of 2016, Christian Medina is shot and killed by Renee Barrigan, who was involved in the prior incident, who killed, in the killing of Brian Pickett, and Jay Brown, who shot and killed Taishon Gaither, who I mentioned again on the prior slide. Both of these deputies are alleged to be Spartans associates. Next slide, please. August 2016, Samuel Aldama and Mizrahi Arago, who were involved in those other cases, shoot and kill Dante Taylor. In August of 2017, Kenneth Lewis, killed by Ryan Rothrock, who was also involved in the murder, or the killing of Brian Pickett. And I want to mention, all of these men are unarmed. Next slide, please. Ricardo Sundejas Jr., killed after he was seen by Samuel Aldama and others holding a gun in his home. As I said, Aldama is a tattooed executioner, and in this incident, the deputies that also participated in that were alleged Spartan associates. Next slide, please. So in summary, that's three assaults, one non-fatal shooting, and five deaths across at least three deputy gangs. Next slide. So LA County, again, we're talking about this stuff as it relates to gangs, but it goes throughout the department, and it's not just deputy gangs. We've seen this in county contracts that have gone unfulfilled in Compton. KPCC in LAist, Emily Elena Dugdale did some fabulous reporting about deputies in the schools. They are more likely to stop black teams up to four times as often as their peers, and there have been videos that have circulated on social media of deputies assaulting children. Next slide. Deputies also use a practice called hunting, where they look for someone to get an arrest statistic. Deputy Angel Reynosa described it to me as utilizing the traffic code to stop people of color from minor violations and further taking advantage of people who may not know their rights. Next slide. Deputy Gregory Van Hosen is a prime example of deputy killings that are carried out against community members. Gregory Van Hosen shot and killed 16-year-old Anthony Weber on February 4, 2018. This case was settled by the county for over $3 million funded by taxpayers. Just 18 months later, Deputy Van Hosen kills again, this time 22-year-old Jamal Simpson. Gregory Van Hosen is still employed by LASD, and it's unclear if he was ever disciplined for either of these shootings. I know I'm coming up on my time, so I'm going to go through this quickly.
If you could just take one more minute, that would be great.
Yes, just one more minute. Next slide, please. We've seen cosmetic fixes that have been proposed by the Sheriff's Department, such as removing logos or insignias, and then later bringing them back, most notably by the Ford Apache logo done by Vianueva in 2018. We've seen them fail to abide by subpoenas granted by this body, and Sheriff Vianueva has also banned deputies from participating in these meetings, and they continue to avoid California Public Records Act requests. There is no oversight body for those requests, so when they refuse to abide by that law, there is no accountability. And I'm at my time now, so I will cease. Thank you so much for having me. And I encourage everyone to visit lasdgangs.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Castle. So we hope to be able to talk with you a bit more about your findings during the course of our question and answers, as well as during our public comments. We hope to have more time to talk with you.
Thank you.
Left off, which is on the question of the relationship between stations that have alleged deputy gangs operating out of them and use of force up to and including deadly force. So Commissioner Kennedy, I'll turn it over to you to talk about some of the new findings from the Loyola Center on Juvenile Law Policy, which you direct.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about deputy gangs. In January of 2021, my students and I published a report on deputy gangs that was really focusing on the impact of unrestricted deputy gangs for 50 years on constitutional policing and the justice system within Los Angeles. And one of the things we pointed out is we did a five-year study of all deputy shootings in the entire county. And there tended to be a cluster of shootings around stations that are incubators for deputy gangs. And while we can't say the gangs are the cause of escalated violence, there certainly was a strong correlation. To that end, the past year, we've tried to expand that study of deputy shootings throughout the county. And so now we have a database of all the shootings, fatal, non-fatal, even non-hit shootings, done by sheriff's deputies in the entire county. And the results that we found are very similar to the original results from the five-year study. When Loyola published its report, 50 years of deputy gangs, the top three stations for shootings were East LA, Compton, and Century Station, in that order. When we did the 10-year study, there was a much greater number of overall shootings. The first study, which was five years, encompassed 133 shootings, but the 10-year study jumped to 396. So really, we're looking at an average when you, when you look back 10 years of 40 shootings per year. And the most remarkable finding is that, once again, even with a greater timeframe and many more shootings, the top three stations were the same. It's a different specific order. Number one is Century, which is definitely a station known for generating deputy gangs like the Regulators and the Spartans. And then number two was the same as it was in the five-year study, the Compton Station, which we all know is associated with the executioner's gang right now. And then number three in the 10-year study was East LA, which, as Cerise said, appears to be the origin story of the gangs with the Little Red Devils. You've also had the Cavemen, the Bandidos. And my understanding is that there's even a new one emerging as we speak from that station. So the 10-year study affirms much of what was said in the original report last January, that stations with a history of unrestricted deputy gangs tend to be stations with significantly higher shoot rates than the stations that don't have these gangs. And there are other reasons to think that deputy gangs might be the cause of escalation of police violence. And I say that because OSS, the gang unit, played a much more prominent role in, it's actually number five of all stations and units in the 10-year study of shootings. And it wasn't that high in our original five-year study. But when you take the 10-year study, OSS, of course, earlier on, had the Jump Out Boys, you know, a undeniable deputy gang, where a creed was seized from a patrol car stating that they would glorify police shootings and kind of really talking about the whole code of the gang was to do whatever it takes to get the quote "bad guys", unquote, including false statements and also memorializing police shootings. So I think it's not happenstance that OSS was a high-shoot unit in the 10-year study precisely because at the time of the first five years of the study, the Jump Out Boys were operating in that unit unrestricted before the scandal broke. So I think it moves us all to really deep dive into police deputy shootings in LA County and try to track them to stations and perhaps even using Cerise's great database of people that she has identified as potential deputy gang members to try to get that correlation tighter. And that's what we intend to do, and we intend to publish the results of the study in full this spring. As my time comes to conclude, I just want to make one other comment to look for in the future. Sheriff Vianueva and many sheriffs before him have denied that LASD has deputy gangs, and they invoke the language of criminal street gangs under Penal Code 186.22, which defines a street gang as three or more persons with a common name or identifying signal whose primary activity is the commission of specified crimes in the penal code, and the members engage in a pattern of criminal activity, very similar to what Cerise just said. But come January 1st, the legislature has passed AB 598, which is codified as Penal Code 1367, and it expands the definition of a quote "law enforcement gang", unquote. It changes the definition for deputy gangs. It says, "A law enforcement gang is a group of peace officers in an agency who may identify under a name or may associate with a name or identifying symbol like a tattoo, and they engage in quote 'a pattern of on-duty behavior that intentionally violates the law or fundamental principles of policing.'" This, I think, sets aside the sheriff's major defense that the groups are not street gangs because the legislature specifically adopted a more appropriate and broader definition of law enforcement gang. And so we should really look at that new definition and litigate it to make sure that we get full answers to our questions about these subgroups. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kennedy, and thank you very much for keeping time and updating us on the work that your center has done, this critically important work on behalf of LA County. Next, I want to turn to Mr. Vincent Miller, who is a civil rights attorney, who currently represents a number of deputies in the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department who are suing for various violations of civil rights law and torts law, including unlawful termination, retaliation, and the like. Mr. Miller will talk a bit about some of the claims that these deputies are making in relationship to alleged deputy gangs that are operating particularly out of the East LA Station. So, Mr. Miller, I'll turn this over to you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Priscilla. Eight of my deputies in my case, Hernandez versus the County of Los Angeles, bravely stepped forward and brought the extent of the harm of deputy gangs to everybody's attention, and it's helped lead to the call for reform. What I'm going to do is quickly, well, I'm going to talk fast because my time's limited, as I go through some of the evidence that we've collected in this case so far. So it's understood these aren't just claims, they aren't just allegations, we're not talking rumor. We've had over 15 deputies so far break the code of silence and testify under oath in depositions, knowing they're going to be retaliated against by the sheriff's office, and they've given us significant evidence that's gone beyond just being allegations. I'm going to talk quickly when I go through some of this, examples of the evidence we've collected. So far, the under oath testimony of about 15 deputies confirms there are deputy gangs in the Sheriff's Department, and they still exist, and that the Bonditos are one of those deputy gangs. It's confirmed that the leaders of the Bonditos gangs are called shot callers, like the leaders of prison of prison gangs. It's confirmed that the Bandidos are illegally racist and sexist, excluding African Americans and women from membership. It's confirmed the Bandidos are very organized, they pledge their loyalties to the gang over residents and over their fellow deputies. The Bandidos long controlled the training program at East Los Angeles Station. Testimony has confirmed the Bandidos destroy camaraderie and protect criminals in the streets by using the tactic of intentionally withholding backup of good cops on dangerous calls. It's been confirmed this tactic has been used by the Bandidos since at least 2014, and it continues today. The Bandidos have withheld backup on partners on murder calls, shot fire call, calls, domestic violence, and armed robbery calls, repeatedly putting residents and other deputies' lives in danger. It's confirmed that L.A.S.D. has never disciplined any deputy gang member for withholding backup on other deputies. It's confirmed the Bandidos meet the definition of a street gang as well as the cop gang as defined by California's new state, state law, as the Bandidos are a law enforcement group that engages in a pattern of rogue on-duty behavior that violates the law or fundamental principles of professional policing. It's confirmed that the Bandidos, many times over the years, use assault and battery on other deputies, strangling and sucker punching other deputies unconscious behind the East Los Angeles Station, across the street from the station, and at station, and at station events such as Kennedy Hall. It's confirmed that the assault and battery committed against other deputies at Kennedy Hall was a coordinated gang attack, not simply the acts of four drunken individuals who happened to be coincidentally at the same event and belonged to the same subgroup. It's confirmed that many members, prospects, and associates of the gang lied in the course of investigation into the Kennedy Hall attacks, and that none of them were given any discipline for dishonesty. Testimony confirms that all of the recent controversial shootings of residents of East Los Angeles were done by prospects of the Bandidos gang. It's confirmed there are currently three Bandidos under indictment by the district's attorney's office for writing false police reports and planting evidence on residents. It's confirmed that when Villanueva stated recently there were no subgroups, that he knew of that, committed criminal acts, this was a false statement. It's confirmed that the Bandidos dominated the East Los Angeles Station before Alex Villanueva became sheriff and after Alex Villanueva became sheriff. Testimony has confirmed that, by Villanueva's own leadership, confirmed it was false when he repeatedly stated that he transferred 36 Bandidos out of the station, when in fact he had transferred zero Bandidos out of the East Los Angeles Station. When Villanueva stated that his first act as sheriff was to appoint the new captain of East Los Angeles to identify the Bandido problem and fix the problem, this was a false statement, as it never happened. The captain confirmed he made zero investigation into the Bandidos. It is confirmed that Villanueva's claims he disciplined 26 Bandidos for the Kennedy Hall attack was blatantly false, and in fact, he retaliated against the whistleblowers on the Kennedy Hall incident. Villanueva announced a new anti-deputy gang policy 1.5 years ago, but testimony confirms he's never enforced the policy. It's useless, according to testimony. Testimony confirms that speaking about the, out about the Bandidos' career suicide is doing so results from retaliation from the sheriff and L.A.S.D. L.A.S.D. protects the Bandidos and gives promotions to them even after the county pays out millions of dollars in settlement based on their wrongful conduct. It is confirmed that the Bandidos recently had an inking party where they gave membership and tattoos to several of their prospects, including some of the deputies who were involved in the controversial shootings of residents. I also want to add as well, we don't yet have testimony because we just got confirmation from informants, but as expected, a new gang has arisen in East Los Angeles. There is now new ink. Informants have also confirmed that Inspector General Max Huntsman's report, calling the Bandidos' investigation a cover-up, was correct. In fact, investigators were given explicit orders at the beginning to bury the investigation. Now I can catch my breath a little bit, I'm sorry, my time is limited, but my point is these are facts, these are, this is evidence, it's not just rumor or allegation. It is my opinion that deputy gangs are worse than street gangs because the street gangs, we expect to be engaging in criminal behavior. Cops are expected to be held to a higher standard to protect residents and not to attack them. And there's no other law enforcement agency in America that has a history of deputy gangs, and it's very informative to look at a comparison between L.A.S.D. and its sister agency, LAPD, which does the exact same type of work in Southern California, and LAPD does not have deputy gangs. So this isn't about defunding the police, it's about defanging deputy gangs. And we continue to call on the county of Los Angeles to enact genuine reform, but I want to make the point, a big point, is that this is not just a Villanueva problem. Villanueva is right that the problem existed before he became sheriff and without reform. It is going to continue whether he's elected sheriff or somebody else is elected sheriff. And my last point is, the Board of Supervisors has the legal authority to create policy and should utilize this authority to do so, given L.A.S.D.'s failure to do so. This is a county issue, not just an L.A.S.D. issue, and the county must solve it. We've waited too long for this, we're out of patience. As the saying goes, if the board doesn't fix it, who's going to? And if not now, when? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. So we've heard from panelists about the broad history of alleged deputy gangs in Los Angeles County, we've heard about the impact on communities, we've heard about the impact on deputies themselves who have spoken out on the record and under oath. And next, I want to turn to Rebecca Brown to talk about the impact of the operation of these alleged deputy gangs in places like East Los Angeles, Compton, and Century Station on families. So Rebecca Brown is a staff attorney with the National Lawyers Guild, she is the director of, or coordinator of their Mass Defense Program, and she works quite closely with families who've been impacted by fatal uses of force or killings by members of the sheriff's department. And so she'll talk a bit about what she has learned in the course of her work with these families and with NLG. So Ms. Brown, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, can you hear me okay? Great, all right, I have some sound issues, I'm on my way back. Thank you so much for having me. So I want to start, you know, by acknowledging that the real experts on deputy gangs are the people whose communities are patrolled by these gangs, the people whose loved ones are murdered by the gangs and then are continually harassed and intimidated by the gangs. So I'm very much looking forward to public comment section, hoping that we're going to hear from a lot of directly impacted community members. You know, as the other panelists have already explained, deputy gang police within us versus them mentality where violence against community members is celebrated and rewarded. As Commissioner Kennedy's research shows, there's a strong correlation between deputy shootings and stations with gangs. Another important correlation I want to bring to your attention is between stations with deputy gangs and the harassment of families of people who've been killed by the sheriff's department. This harassment is happening at East L.A., as we know very well, it's home to the Bandidos, in South L.A. with the Grim Reapers, in Compton, in, in the Century Station area, we have the Spartans. And many of the loved ones of these families who are being harassed were killed by alleged deputy gang members. So for example, Anthony Vargas was murdered by alleged Bandido's prospects, Jonathan Rojas and Nicholas Perez. Paul Reyes was murdered as well by an alleged member of the Bandidos, Deputy Hector Savedra. John Horton was killed inside Men Central Jail by alleged members of the 3000 Boys. This culture of secrecy and violence in the L.A. County Sheriff's Department that allows deputy gangs to operate unchecked is the same culture that's allowing deputies to harass grieving family members and leave these family members with no meaningful accountability measures. On an almost daily basis, deputies try to intimidate the relatives of the people they've killed. They will drive by their homes, park out front of their homes, drive slowly by the memorial site, damage items at memorial sites, taunt family members with comments, laughing at them, follow family members when they're driving, park outside their workplaces, take pictures of them or record them. And, you know, this conduct has also escalated to more serious and oftentimes illegal forms of harassment on a number of occasions, including targeting family members for arrest and detention with no probable cause that they've committed any crime, targeting family members for pulling them over in their vehicles, searching their vehicles, detaining them, harassing family members of minor age. So, you know, for example, in October 2019, Paul Reyes' sister, Jaylene, spoke publicly for the first time about her brother's murder at the hands of L.A.S.D. Later that evening, deputies forcefully arrested her at her brother's memorial site without probable cause. Kind of a long story to sum it up, they ended up bringing her to the East Los Angeles Station, where she was detained until the next morning. And then while she was detained, L.A.S.D. personnel deleted videos that she took of them from her cell phone. In South L.A., L.A.S.D. deputies showed up uninvited to a memorial service for Ryan Twiman, who was shot 34 times by two Century Station deputies. The deputies mocked his grieving family members. One deputy went so far as to go up to his mother and ask her to have a pin with a picture of Ryan on it. When she asked him to leave, he said, paraphrasing, F Ryan and F U2. In one incident in East L.A., where a deputy was harassing a teenage family member, the deputy told her that the people who sue the police are criminals and that there are no deputy gangs. And I am interested to hear my co-panelist thoughts on the new state law, which Christopher Kennedy read, and I'll quote, "A group of law enforcement officers within an agency that engage in a pattern of rogue on-duty behavior that violates the law or fundamental principles of professional policing." So in my opinion, this constant and aggressive behavior harassing families fits this definition to a T. These deputies are engaging in unconstitutional policing practices that serve no legitimate purpose and only, only serve to intimidate family members and other community members from speaking out against the department. This is exactly what gangs do, they control their territory and assert their authority by any means necessary. I also wanted to touch on the process of reporting harassment in other forms of deputy misconduct, because this is yet another symptom of the dysfunctional department that allows misconduct in deputy gangs to go unchecked. Family members who are experiencing harassment and other forms of misconduct generally don't feel comfortable reporting to L.A.S.D. and filing complaints for a number of reasons. You know, first, they're feeling, they fear further retaliation and harassment if they file a complaint. Second, they feel that reporting is essentially pointless because deputies are rarely disciplined or otherwise held accountable for their actions. Third, of course, very emotionally difficult to engage with the very deputies that killed their loved ones. So complaints of harassment by deputies are rarely filed and other types, or complaints of other types of deputy misconduct often go unreported. While people can file complaints to the OIG's office, these complaints are still passed over to L.A.S.D. for investigation, so this option does not really adequately address these concerns. As the other panelists have mentioned, you know, ultimately, the issue of deputy gangs and family harassment are not isolated problems. They're symptoms of a larger systematic failure of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. This is, this is a department with an environment that allows violent gangs and unlawful policing to thrive because deputies, deputies know that there are no measures of accountability and department leadership intentionally works any efforts of, of reform. As the LA Times recently said, radical overhauls are needed. On a county level, we've watched this play out for years. We've listened to the families of people killed by the department plead to the Board of Supervisors and the COC to take action for years. The Board of Supervisors has passed motions addressing L.A.S.D.'s practices, and Sheriff Villanueva has responded by verbally attacking the supervisors at every chance he gets. The Office of the Inspector General has attempted to research various problems with the department, but L.A.S.D. often refuses to share documents with the OIG and to facilitate these investigations. The COC has subpoenaed Sheriff Villanueva many times, and he's refused to comply time and again. The question is, how do we take action that will be truly impactful in this climate? We need to boldly re-envision the way the county can shape the sheriff's department. So I'd like to briefly share some recommendations from the Chuck the Sheriff Coalition as to what steps we can take next to move in this direction.
First, if you could do that very briefly, just, just one, if you could do that in one minute, and also just note that we have heard from Melanie Ochoa about some of these recommendations.
Yeah, all right. So briefly, I'll again, you know, just urge the board to place on the ballot next year a charter amendment that would give the board the authority to remove the sheriff for serious violations of public trust. We really need to step up and set consequences for rogue sheriffs, especially when they're fostering a department that is a threat to public safety for Angelenas. Briefly, I also urge the board to remove traffic enforcement out of the hands of L.A.S.D., to continue establishing an external complaint investigation and discipline system, to properly fund and build out the family assistance program, and as it mentioned, to use their power and authority to create policies for L.A.S.D. because we cannot trust L.A.S.D. and Sheriff Villanueva to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So at this point, I want to, first of all, thank the, the full panel for, for being here. People who are journalists, lawyers, scholars, civil rights attorney, in my opinion, have done more to help us to understand how deputy gangs are operating in Los Angeles County than county entities have. And that is both a, a great tribute to, to your work and, I think, an indictment of the county itself. I will also say, for those of you who are concerned that the sheriff isn't here to respond, that is not because of lack of trying. We routinely and continually invite the sheriff and sheriff's representatives to be present at all of our meetings, and as Ms. Brown just noted, they continue to refuse to participate. So we will continue to extend an invitation to Sheriff Villanueva, to Under Sheriff Murakami, and to any other member of the sheriff's department who would like to, if they feel anything here has been said that's incorrect, to correct that record. So you have standing invitation, and please know that, that you may attend, particularly if you've been subpoenaed to do so, and we would expect that you would answer questions under oath. Okay, so what I'd like to ask you all, the, the four of you have spoken very quickly, is if you have questions for one another, before I open up questions for commissioners. And you can just unmute yourself and, and say whether you have questions for, for one another. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Brown.
My question is for Cerise. I was wondering if in your research, you've seen how any impact in, when there's a, a shooting involving a deputy gang member, and kind of the aftermath of, you know, how evidence is collected, how families are notified, how kind of all that process is handled, if that you've seen impacts from the fact that it's deputy gangs involved in the shooting? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I think the consistent thing that I have seen in the aftermath is, one, the harassment of families, even at the scene of a shooting, they will be harassed by deputies, called names, prevented from seeing their loved one, restrained from entering the area. And then following the shooting, they are followed throughout their neighborhoods, they are pulled over, and their cars searched for various reasons. The family of Anthony Vargas has spoken at length about what they have been subjected to. Now several family members of Mr. Vargas are forced to walk around with body cameras on because the harassment has escalated to such a point. As far as evidence collection goes, there has been a number of questions on how that is carried out. I'm reporting details, several inconsistencies in evidence collection in a number of these cases that I have detailed, the Vargas case is one in particular, as well as the killing of a man in East Los Angeles County by a female deputy, his name is escaping me right now, but in any case, all of those instances are documented in depth in the Tradition of Violence series, as well as the Deputy Gang Database.
Thank you. Um, if there are any further questions for panelists, I'll now open it up to members of the commission to ask questions of the panelists. Commissioner Rubin.
Yes, I am particularly, I, first of all, I want to thank all the panelists for their, their hard work and their insight. I'd like to probe Mr. Miller a bit further in, in his mentioning that the comparison between the sheriff's department and LAPD, both within L.A. County, LAPD, according to Mr. Miller, doesn't have deputy gangs. So my question is, why not?
Well, I've actually researched this a lot, the answer to this, and I have had conversation with top brass of LAPD, and I asked them the same question, what's the difference? And the thing is, just to have some perspective, like I said, it's two agencies operating the same region of Southern California, Los Angeles, doing the same line of work. Yes, there's bad employees in every line of work in every profession, so LAPD is not perfect, but they don't have cop gangs. So we talked about this, what's the difference? The LAPD people told me in one word, it's accountability, they had to answer it in one word, but we talked further about what's different in terms of actual practices and policies. And there's policies on the books of L.A.S.D. policies, and there's, uh, policies on the books of L A S D, most of them are in place that would, you would hope would prevent the formation of deputy gangs, but the actual implementation enforcement is not there. And to give you a good example of where there's policies in place, but there's a difference between L A P D and L A S D, uh, a great example is the abuse of trainees. The Bandidos have historically controlled the training program at East Los Angeles. The way they recruit new members primarily is by abusing the trainees. They bully them, they harass them, they terrorize the trainees to put the trainee in a position of choosing between quitting or staying and bearing it and being bullied, or to become the bully and join the gang. And that's how they create prospects. There's a power dynamic established in that relationship of L A S D that you don't have at L A P D. L A P D has a zero tolerance policy, and they enforce it. Zero tolerance of abusive trainees. To this day, trainees are being abused at many of the stations in L A S D. There's little accountability for depriving trainees of food breaks, of, you know, working twenty-four hours without sleep, physically, you know, up to physical violence being committed against them. That's the history of L A S D with the trainees, that's how they create new members. So as far as reform is concerned, the sheriff is going to say, we have anti-hazing policies in place, it's already there, but it's not actually being en- enforced. So that's an example of two agencies, they may have similar policies, but the actual culture and practice is very different. Then there's a whole set of policies that are actually different, and a good example of that is in L A S D, when a deputy is accused of criminal conduct using excessive force, let's say a situation where there's a use of excessive force, and it's a controversial, questionable shooting, and it's sent over to I C I B for a criminal investigation, the sheriff's department puts a hold on an administrative investigation. So you could have a deputy who's under investigation for criminal conduct, and it can go on for a year or more, and there's no investigation, no consequences, no discipline. The L A, L A S D will even at times delay doing any administrative investigation until civil litigation is finished. So you could have a deputy for years not being held accountable for his conduct. L A P D is starkly different in its policies. They, L A, L A P D will start an administrative investigation from day one, the same time there's a criminal investigation. They will wall off the investigations from each other for due process rights to protect of the deputy in his criminal investigation, but they will immediately begin the administrative investigation because they want to find out if something wrong happened. They want to find out if their deputy did something that he shouldn't have. They want to find out if they need to impose discipline, do they need to take the deputy o- o- officer off the line, not be on duty? Do they need to suspend this deputy? Do they need to do training, not just to this deputy, but other deputies? So they're not so worried about, uh, you know, the public finding out, or plaintiffs, attorneys finding out information. L A P D will try to investigate the problem and fix it, whereas L A S D will not fix it often and not investigate it, and this can go on for years. And of course, on the back end, we've got a lot of situations where you've got accusations of excessive force, you've got deputies who are accused of excessive force in controversial shootings, and there never is even an I A investigation at all in L A S D. So that's a big problem, and that's a big difference between the two. It'd be very helpful to look at those differences between L A P D and L A S D because we have the benefit right in front of us of an unintentional scientific experiment has been taking place in Southern California, and you see the results are different, so you want to look at what's part.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Are there other questions, Commissioner Gignans?
Oh yeah, thank you, Mr. Miller, I've got one for you too. Um, you mentioned that there has been either a resurgence or recently an inking party. Can you say a little more about that? How recent are, are, are you, you know, what's the timeframe for that when you say recent?
Well, the timeframe, when I say recent, it's been a while now because, you know, we first heard reporting of this happening about a year ago from now, that this took place. Um, but, you know, a lot of times these, the information starts where we don't know, is it just rumor or is it fact? You know, and, and so we hear a lot of stories and it goes all around the station, and that's what happened the end of two thousand twenty, is it was all over the station in East LA and then traveled outside the station to many parts of the sheriff's department, that there was an inking party. And, um, but it's now since been confirmed that it did happen because we had witnesses testifying in deposition. I also have had deputies personally tell me that they witnessed tattoos, that a tat- tattoo on a body that wasn't there before the inking party happened. Um, so we do know for a fact this happened, there was an inking party, the Bandidos take the, took their numbers to a hundred. Uh, there's a, there's a history at the East Los Angeles Station when a gang subgroup goes to a hundred, a new, a new gangs it started. When the caveman hit a hundred, they stopped inking, and that's when the Bandidos arose. So once we heard about the inking party, we then reasonably and logically inferred from that, that new ink, a new gang would arise at East Los Angeles, and now I, it's just been confirmed for me from an informant that that has indeed happened.
Thank you. Uh, are there other commissioner questions before we turn to, uh, public comment? Okay, um, seeing none, we'll turn to public comment at this point, thank you all. I would invite the panelists to stay on, uh, to hear public comment in case there are questions, uh, directed to you all. But of course, I understand if you have the plans and, and you're not able to do so, but, uh, and, and we, we appreciate you for being here, uh, if, if you have to sign off. Uh, so I just want to give it, uh, some, uh, guidance in terms of, uh, if folks want to, uh, sign on and participate in public comment. So i- in order to participate in public comment, you must log on to, uh, Webex. Uh, details on how to do so can be found if you're on the internet at C O C dot L A County dot gov. Once you were logged in and you put in your, your name and information, um, or whatever name you want to report, uh, you can hit the raise your hand function and you will be put into the, uh, queue. Um, uh, when this, when shaded in, your hand is raised. Uh, we will give folks about two minutes, uh, to give public comment, which is our, our norm. Um, we have about twenty-one people who s- who signed up, and of course, more folks may do so, and we'll try to get through everyone so that everyone can be heard. Um, if you want your name to be recorded in the minutes, please indicate, uh, uh, indicate as such when you, uh, sign on. Okay, um, so, uh, that's our sort of public comment, um, uh, protocol. Uh, Ingrid, if you could make our public comment announcement in Spanish.
Buenas tardes, si gustaría traducción de sus comentarios, simplemente diga la palabra española y alguien le dará instrucciones para cómo proceder. Gracias.
Okay, uh, so, uh, Jennifer, if you'd like to read, uh, our first, uh, member of the public who'd like to comment.
First, we will hear from Paleta Dunn Sanders, you're unmuted, please go ahead, Paleta. Paleta Dunn Sanders, you are unmuted, but we are not hearing you. Would you like to make a public comment? Okay, please chat me with the, um, on the back end and we'll see if we can get your audio working. Uh, Lisa Vargas, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, I'm the mother of Anthony Vargas, who the East LA Sheriff's Department killed three years ago. They shot my son ten times in the back, two times in the head and one time in the arm. Um, my comment is to the panel, um, I work and I live here for forty-something years in East Los Angeles, and I can tell you that the findings of that is going to be true because, like I said, I live here in East LA, I'm in the heart of East LA, I'm a community leader, I work with a lot of families that have been impacted, everybody on the board has heard mine and my family's story before, um, and the, the crime that's going on here, you know, I keep seeing reports of Villanueva saying the crime rate has gone up in this last year. I want to know how much of that crime has been committed by the sheriff's department? How many killings? How many domestic violence cases? How many sexual assaults have they committed themselves and why isn't that being reported? The second thing is, we have a lot of unhoused community that lives here in the East LA area, where the sheriffs are now shooting them with B B guns, and I've been witness to this. So something has to be done and the board has to step up, along with all the findings that we're finding, there's more information that's out there, and I think that people need to start rising up in our communities and speaking on what's going on here because we need to take our streets back and away from these criminals who think that they're getting away with these gang-like tactics, who fail the community every day and are doing nothing but harming it and causing more trauma to our community. How's our community supposed to heal when there's no services that are out here provided for the ones that have been impacted? The harassment and all the tactics, the gang-like tactics that they're providing, not even our gang members that are here in East LA are doing that to our people. How many times have you seen a person in a gang-related shooting get shot thirteen times? This is ridiculous and the board needs to do something about it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Vargas, and, and thank you for, uh, continually coming to our meetings and talking about, um, your work and, and the work that your family is doing, uh, related to deputy gangs. Um, uh, Jennifer, please call the next public comment.
And next is Richie Sergenko. Oh, you're unmuted, please go ahead, Richie.
Hi, yes, this is, uh, Richie Sergenko from the People City Council. Um, thank you all so much for hosting this discussion tonight. Um, I would just say, yeah, the, the, the presence of deputy gangs is obvious. Um, you know, it is extremely troubling that the deputies that have killed Anthony Vargas continue to intimidate and harass the family in East LA. Um, sa- same for Paul Rea, Ryan Twiman, uh, John Horan, any of the families that speak, speak out for their loved ones. They are victim to intimidation and harassment from the sheriff's department. Now Alex Villanueva, on multiple occasions, um, after, I believe, you know, the board pa- passed a motion in, in regards to the sheriffs, has called out the Vargas family on his, on his Instagram lives. Um, myself, he's posted about me on his Facebook page, he mentions, uh, People City Council on his Instagram Live, um, you know, you all, uh, I, I know are subject to the same intimidation and harassment. Um, he has a secret team of police, and so I, I think that this board needs to do everything in, in its power to see what they can do right now in regards to Sheriff Villanueva, but also, um, when you send the recommendations to the board supervisors, you know, the Check Sheriff Coalition send a, 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 a letter of, of what we believe, uh, needs, needs to happen, and, and I think that, um, if you reviewed it, that those suggestions should go to, uh, the board supervisor as well. We, we need more civilian oversight, um, and control of the sheriff's department because, I mean, it's, it's proving that, like, what, what control do we really have? Villanueva says i- isn't abiding by the subpoenas, and I know this public comment and the, and the C O C can't respond right now, but what is the, what, where are we at with holding Villanueva accountable for defying those subpoenas? Can we hold him in contempt? Um, because right now, it just looks like he can do whatever he wants, and, and it seems like he truly can do whatever he wants. Um, so we need to figure out what we can do in the short term and the long term, but, but thank you for hosting and thank you all, uh, all of the panelists for, for the work that, that you've done and will continue to do. I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you. And what we will provide some updates on the status of those subpoenas, um, if not today, then at, at our next regular meeting. And Jennifer, I just want to make sure that we have the, the timer up, I can't see it, um, so I just want to make sure that, uh, it's, it's visible so that we're all on the same page.
We do have the timer up, if you're a panelist, can you just raise your hand visually to show if you see the timer? Okay, it looks like most people are seeing it.
Maybe it's just me. Okay, then we'll, we'll continue.
Okay, we will move on to An- Angel Reynosa. Angel, you are unmuted, please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, my name is Angel Reynosa, I'm a former Los Angeles County Sheriff's Deputy. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of like my personal experiences. Um, I was fired by Alex Villanova in August of twenty nineteen for being accused of fabricating a shooting at Lancaster Station. A lot, what the public doesn't know is just days before the shooting incident, I was ordered by my training officer, Deputy Anthony Levin, to falsify a police report. I refused to falsify the report and confronted him about his, like, integrity issues and for him ordering me to commit a crime, and, uh, I told him I was going to contact A L S to discuss the entire, uh, situation, that's our police union. And after I requested, uh, refused to his request, I was like immediately told by the training staff to, um, it would be best for me to leave the station and return to work to like a jail facility. I was placed at the front desk as punishment and was no longer able to patrol. And then on the day of the incident, I was hit by an unknown object on my right shoulder while in the station parking lot, and I was sent to the hospital to be treated for my injuries. But three days after the incident, the sheriff's officials held a live press conference stating that I had confessed and, um, that there was no shooter, you know, relieving all the, uh, stress from like the residents in Analo Valley, and then I was fired immediately, but no charges were filed, and I've always claimed that my innocence and denied all the allegations made against me. And on January sixteenth in twenty twenty, coincidentally, one day after I was granted a civil service commission hearing, I was arrested, I was, charges were brought against me, and, uh, during the arrest, the deputies injured my hand, when I was trying to videotape them, they lost my wallet and my personal belongings. Uh, the sheriff's department has repeatedly lied to the public about the facts of my case and even spoken to my recent employers, resulting in my termination. I am constantly being harassed by Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, I encourage deputies who have experienced similar situations to speak out. I became a sheriff's deputy because I want to make a difference and help people, but when I attempted to report the wrongdoing of my immediate supervisor, I ended up facing prosecution. Thank you for your time.
Brittany Nichols, Brittany, you're unmuted, please go ahead.
Uh, my name is Brittany Nichols, I'm an LA resident and member of Ground Game LA. I think the only way to truly get rid of not only the gangs, but the toxic culture that dominates the L A S D is to abolish the entire department, because this isn't just a rank and file issue. L A S D leadership purposely promotes deputy gang members and their associates, they're not capable of holding themselves accountable, and furthermore, they aren't interested in doing so. Deputies that have worked in Internal Affairs and attempted to have some level of accountability are overruled by leadership. The few reporters that are actually good at their jobs and work to bring these things to light have only uncovered a fraction of the shit the L A S D department is up to. Uh, if everyone in L A S D isn't in a gang, then they are powerless to stop these things from happening. So where does that leave us now? Well, multiple people in the gang database are running for sheriff. Cecil Rambo, who's throwing up a gang sign and a picture with tattooed Vikings, and who was and continues to be homies with former under sheriff Tanaka, who went to prison, by the way, is running. Eli Vera is running. That's the guy who helped rehire Mandoyan after he was fired for stalking and harassing another deputy. This is all political theater for them to keep people that will protect deputy gangs and the toxic culture of L A S D in power. These are issues a large part of the public is still unaware of, and part of this body's mission should be public awareness. There should not be a resident in LA County that does not know about the existence of deputy gangs and the overall misconduct and lack of accountability of L A S D, because they are a threat to the public safety of every black and brown person in this county. Thank you for having this meeting, please continue to work on these issues, and please, 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 make this something that everyone knows about, because we will have to vote on these deputy gang members in general. Thank you.
And next, we will hear from Stephanie Luna, Stephanie, you're unmuted, please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Luna, I'm the aunt of Anthony Vargas. My nephew Anthony was twenty-one when he was executed by two East LA sheriff deputies who chose to target and murder him as an entryway into the deputy gang known as the Bandidos. From the moment Anthony was targeted to the aftermath of his murder, his civil rights have been violated, and we have seen the effects of these deputy gang tactics firsthand. The crime scene was tampered with and a gun had been planted, a gun that held none of my nephew's DNA on it. Upon reading Serise's reporting, we learned that all responding deputies from the night of Anthony's murder have been identified as active members of the Bandido deputy gang. Since day one, there were no repercussions for killer cops Jonathan Rojas and Nicholas Perez. Instead, they were celebrated at Kennedy Hall and promoted to training deputies. This is a pattern of celebration that we're talking about. Instead of being held accountable, these deputies who murder as part of these initiations are being rewarded, they're given high-ranking positions and are allowed back on the streets to kill again, much like Deputy John, uh, Nicholas Perez, who went on to murder twenty-five-year-old George Serrano sixteen months after killing Anthony. From the moment we arrived to the scene of Anthony's shooting, we were criminalized for loving Anthony, and three years later, nothing has changed. My family has endured witness intimidation while we are in active litigation. We have been actively surveilled, taunted, doxxed, followed, and illegally detained. We have been mocked and laughed at, while his, while deputies involved in my nephew's shooting have taunted and harassed at Memorial While his, while deputies involved in my nephew's shooting have taunted and harassed us at memorial sites and anniversaries. We have been pulled over for bogus felony stops and have had guns drawn at us. We've been tailgated, boxed in, and we've had deputies tell us that they gave my nephew a degrading nickname within the Sheriff's Department. We've had Anthony's killer Jonathan Rojas stalk us outside our family home. We've been publicly mocked and targeted by Alex Villanueva in multiple lives and press conferences that resulted in full retaliation from sheriff deputies. There is no reforming a system that is actively engaged in cover-up, lies, and false reporting to justify the murder, intimidation, and harassment of our family members. Eradicate deputy gangs. Thank you.
And next we will hear from Miller, Jay Miller Professional. You're unmuted. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm here. So I'm just gonna say that one, I've, I've been on these calls many times and, and been a part of, you know, the public comments for the Oversight Committee. I, I decided to join back on this one because it was a special one. I actually stopped coming after being the way it was showed up. It was very disrespectful on a Thursday afternoon at one of the last meetings um, that he did show up to. So there really is no need to have him when he's just disrespectful and arrogant about these killings and, and human life. So I'm gonna say that part. I'm also saying that I'm not just a public member and I don't want us, and not that just is a bad thing. I'm just saying that you know, we need to take more weight to the fact that we are people. We are people in many dimensions. So I'm a mother. I'm a vicarious victim. I'm an African-American person. I have a sister to black boys. I'm a, you know, like I said, a mother to a black man. Um, I'm also an advocate to just, to disa- to disabled people. And my brother, one of my other brothers is disabled and has been attacked by the police. Um, I, as you've mentioned, I'm a professional and I'm also an expert. So our public is very, very la- layered. And we need to do something more to have us heard versus, you know, having like two minutes to speak. Let's do something in the park where it's, it's big, it's public, and we can get on a podium. This is just, it's just too much to do in a short period of time. We need a clear checklist of what we can do as community members and how we can share this information with other people that have been victimized. Um, because people don't know what to do and they're afraid of retaliation, as other speakers have already said. I want to ask us to pray for all the leaders such as the ones that are on this line. Um, the ones that came in the commission, the Ms. Cherise, uh, the work that she's doing, uh, attorneys like the ones that's on the line here. We gotta pray for them because this is very, very serious work. And we don't have as much of the power that these cops do with these guns. So, uh, well, we have the power of God, so let's not forget that. But um, I also want us to ask, I want to ask you to visit strongforsheriff.com and vote for Strong 2022. Um, and the rest is that. Thank you so much.
We will hear from Steve Hill. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, Steve.
Oh, I'm unmuted. Thank you very much. And uh, please record this for me. Hey, um, I'm not gonna ask anybody to, to pray for anyone because I'm an atheist and, and I don't think religion has much to do with this. If, if there was a God, we wouldn't have to be praying for the Sheriff's Department to be held accountable for all the bullshit they do in this community. Now, I want everyone to go to my website. I am running for Congress. Um, SatanforCongress.com. I had my dog shot and killed by these guys. For one, let me tell everybody. I am a United States Marine Corps veteran. I'm also a retired peace officer. And these, these gangs have existed since the early nineties when I was in the department and would go down and participate in the Police Olympics and the CDC Games just about every summer. I heard about these gangs back in ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four. And they still persist today. I had a sheriff come to my house, grove, off the record, and ask me why I was in his neighborhood. I appraised real estate. I'm in everybody's fucking neighborhood. And no one's doing nothing about it. There's no accountability. I know all the politicians, they refuse to help. So I'm running for Congress myself to get money out of politics and the Los Angeles County Department, Sheriff's Department, out of our lives. This shit has been going on too long. And I want to put it on the record that Captain Schaefer, Ron Schaefer at the Palmdale Sheriff's Station, to all indications I have, he is a white nationalist. If anybody want the uh, photo that I have or go to my website, I think I put it up. It's there.
Good your time. Thank you. The next speaker will be Vanessa.
Can I just say briefly, I appreciate that folks are very passionate about, um, you know, voting and the political process. And of course, uh, we want to encourage that, but we also want to note that this is a nonpartisan space and the, the focus of this conversation is really about deputy gangs, not necessarily candidates for sheriff or any other elected uh, office. So I just, just want to make that note before we continue with the next speaker.
Here from Vanessa Moreno. You're unmuted. Go ahead, Vanessa.
Thank you. My name is Vanessa Moreno and I'm a resident and we're in the east Los Angeles area. Um, let me just take a second to gather my, my thoughts with this. I don't believe that the LASD Sheriff's Department can be reformed. What should be, what should happen next is completely abolishing and dismantling these murderous gang members. They're violent. They've proven themselves to be the epitome of incomprehensible demoralization. And they are the absolute epitome of terrorism wreaking havoc onto the lives of black and brown folks of Los Angeles. This is not a conspiracy. The receipts are there. What needs to happen next is just what are the steps we could take forward to abolish these violent, evil criminals? Thanks. I yield my time.
And next we will hear from Anthony Norega. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, Anthony.
Anthony Norega, you're unmuted. Please go ahead.
Uh, yes, my name is Anthony Norega. I am with the League of United Latin American Citizens. Uh, I'm a member of the Civil Rights Commission. Uh, we had a meeting tonight, uh, earlier with uh, Hilary Solis's staff. And we spoke extensively about the issue that we're speaking about tonight. And uh, Hilary Solis is well-known for, for uh, passing and discussing and pushing for reform in the Sheriff's Department. Uh, she needs a lot of support. Uh, apparently there was a motion made to consider options for terminating the employment of Sheriff Villanueva, but it did not pass. I am urging all of you that are in this meeting tonight to contact the supervisors and demand that they start stepping up to the plate with their responsibility and for accountability and transparency coming from the police department, from the Sheriff's Department. And that, that they push and make, make a motion to, and pass it so that they can, they can seriously talk about the options about firing uh, the sheriff. This has gone for too long. It's uh, it's, it's demoralizing that our Latino community or our black community, our minority community are being affected this way. This happens in third-world countries for God's sakes. And, and here we are in the United States and we're putting up with it. We need to demand. Some of the people here said that we need to demand. You're darn right. We need to demand change. And we need to demand change now, not tomorrow. And uh, my heart goes out to uh, to the family of uh, Anthony, uh, Anthony Vargas. And uh, and I hope that uh, we get some answers for, for that family soon. I really want to thank the uh, Commission for taking the opportunities to put together this special meeting. Uh, it's probably a long time coming and uh, I believe that the one uh, person said.
Next we will hear from Laura Shark. Laura, you're unmuted. Please go ahead. Laura Shark, please go ahead with your comment. Hearing nothing, we will move to Christina Vasquez. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, Christina.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Vasquez and my husband Marco Vasquez Jr. was killed by the Pico Sheriff's Station on October sixth of twenty nineteen. Um, and I just wanted to jump on to show support to the other families, um, but also to just let it be known that this is very real. Families are harassed. Um, we were there and we witnessed everything happen. Um, and immediately after, they were very physical with us. My mother-in-law and daughter were both dragged off of my husband. Uh, my daughter was being threatened. Um, after we were taken to the station, they illegally entered our home and claimed to collect evidence that was at the crime scene, which was not. Um, we also planned to do a march for my husband and days before the march, they showed up to our house. Um, days after the march that we had, I would go on daily walks with my cousin and my sons. And a man in a crowd of people approached me like if he knew me and specifically was asking very direct questions. And one of the ones he asked was, are you married? And when I said that I was, because he was already acting very suspicious, he laughed. He said, you are? And immediately we walked away. We were able to get away from him. He followed us for a few blocks. He was in a car and we were walking. Um, I shared the story on social media and I received so much information back stating this normally happens is they're cops and they get sent out to harass and intimidate you. Um, the more that we have spoken out about it, the more we start to notice police presence. Um, as of recently, my daughters also spoke out on one of the meetings that we have, uh, once a month on Thursdays. And a few days after that, we live in a gated community and we had a police uh, patrol car sitting right outside of our unit. Um, a few days after that, my daughter had gone to Target. They were following her in and a handful of sheriffs were right behind her in the store. Uh, it's been happening more often the more that we speak out. Thank you.
We're from Tamra Kay. Go ahead, Tamra.
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead, Tamra.
Okay, um, power and strength to all the families impacted by the sheriff violence. Um, John Horton, uh, Anthony Vargas, Paul Rea, the Vasquez family, and too many more to mention. Um, you know, this is a systemic issue. Unfortunately, you know, just getting rid of the sheriff is not gonna get rid of the sheriff gangs. Um, abolition is key here. Um, you know, because it is a systemic issue from the inception of this country, so-called country. On Turtle Island, the land was stolen and built by the enslaved. So, you know, we have a lot of work to do to dismantle this evil. Um, you know, just simply reforming is not going to uh, have the greatest impact. The greatest impact is abolition. And, you know, the Commission needs to use whatever power you can to remove the sheriff because he is the wicked overseer of all this evil, um, that's being committed under, you know, entire community's watch in, in the Rand Report, um, LA Times, um, millions of news articles, um, scholars, Loyola University. I mean, it's not hidden that there's been sheriff gangs for over fifty years. I mean, this isn't a new problem. We need to eradicate it. And abolition is key. So the uh, Commission needs to use whatever powers you can. Um, and to overhaul the Sheriff's Department and, you know, create a ballot measure for um, further, you know, community oversight. But this community oversight needs to include these families. Um, again, as much as you can, give families time in these meetings and, you know, use their lead and their guidance.
You, Tamra. And the next speaker will be Irma Cooper. Irma, please go ahead.
Yes, my name is Irma Cooper. I'm a citizen of LA County. Uh, police gangs have been allowed to function for too long. We know that these gangs exist. We've done multiple studies on this issue and have taken no action. And it's time to end the police gangs. It's time to change the police system and culture, starting with the top leadership. We must have transparency and accountability. We can no longer be traumatized by having our children murdered, citizens killed, and families destroyed. The Police Department cannot um, be reformed, nor can it police it itself. We need an independent body which includes citizens, not just law enforcement personnel. And the Police Department must be held accountable to the people. We must have our Police Department regain the respect of the people that it serves. Thank you.
Robert Wexler, you're unmuted. Please go ahead, Robert.
Good evening. Um, my name is Rob Wexler and I'm the attorney for the Association for Los Angeles Deputy Sheriffs. In response to the recently proposed policy by the COC to ban deputy subgroups, ALADS, which represents Los Angeles Deputy Sheriff, sought a reasoned legal opinion about the constitutionality of the proposed policy. It hired a national constitutional expert and law school professor who is unbiased and not subject to political influences. This opinion makes clear that the COC's proposed policy is constitutionally overbroad. By way of simple example, it draws no distinction between a deputy subgroup devoted to prayer or philos- philanthropy and one dedicated to violence or harassment. County Council, which offered an opinion on the policy, failed not only to properly analyze the First Amendment expressive and associational rights implicated by the COC policy, but it eschewed any uh, analysis of the other constitutional and statutory rights endangered by the proposed policy. Such as the right to privacy under both the California and US constitutions, freedom of religion, or the statutory right to form and join a labor union, which technically meets the COC's definition of a subgroup. That is, a group of sheriff's deputies who self-ass associate, self-identify, and exclude others assigned to the same station or work unit. ALADS wants to make clear its complete support of efforts to root out any group that engages in unlawful violence, espouses racist beliefs, or seeks to systemically violate the rights of others. That said, just as deputies must pursue justice within legal bounds, the COC must similarly operate in a manner that respects the constitutional rights of the members of the department it oversees. The legal opinion commissioned by ALADS will be provided to the COC very shortly. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Wexler. I was just about to ask you if you could share it with us and, and we'd be happy, I'm sure, Commissioner Rubin and the rest of the members of the uh, deputy uh, uh, the Sheriff's Gang Subcommittee would be happy to talk with you, uh, and uh, the legal scholar that produced that memorandum. Uh, we can hear from our next speaker. Thank you, Jennifer.
We'll hear from Jesse Duena Hernandez. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, Jesse.
Uh, hello, my name, my name is Jesse Duena Hernandez. I'm a independent journalist and photographer. Uh, I stay in, I stay in LA and uh, I just want to say, uh, I'm happy to be here and I just want to say, uh, to all, all the victims to stay strong, like the, you know, uh, until we get justice and stuff like that. And I, I, I can't say much else, but uh, yeah, we pretty much need to abolish the, the whole Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Next we will hear from Bethany Jones. Bethany, you're unmuted. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I really appreciate being here and you uh, hosting this space. Um, I do have a concern that might be somewhat um, connected. And that is uh, Sheriff Villanueva's connection to various Republican or right-wing nonprofits and uh, um, in particular, there's a victims organization that's run by a woman who i- is using her nonprofit to um, it, to support Republican candidates. He went to Orange County in the summer to be there and I felt like it was an absolute mockery of victims. And how dare he do that when he does not acknowledge the victims his own department creates? He does not honor them. He does not stand for them. And then he goes to a different county, ignoring all the COVID rules that have been set here. Is he some sort of tyrannical dictator that's allowed to craft and create his own world? And my question to us all is, why are we allowing it? Why is he here? What, what purpose does he have in this community? He just seems to be intoxicated by the exuberance of his own velocity, his own power. And quite frankly, I do not see the system as broken. I see it as having been built by people who do not look like me, sound like me, sound like any of the victims on this call. And we're calling it a broken system when the system was not designed for us.
And next we will hear from Alejandro Villapondo. You are unmuted. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for the presentations and the work that you all have done. I know that these are monumental, monumental ventures that you all have taken up to do this research. I know that involving oneself with these archives of uh, police terrorism is dangerous work. Um, so I commend all of you. I wanted, I wasn't going to respond to the lawyer on behalf of that union, uh, but I would say that uh, the sheriff's station, the sheriffs as a, as a construct in the city and its county was established in eighteen fifty along, uh, at the same time as the Federal Fugitive Slave Act and at the same time as the Acts to Govern uh, California Indians. And on their cards, it continues to say a tradition of service. And the service has always been the purpose to control particular bodies. Another thing is that I'm concerned with the comments uh, by uh, Mr. Miller, who talked about all this history and all these factual things and said that this is not about defunding the police, but about proper reform. I'm concerned that that continues to be the thrust. Uh, we hear over and over the historical documentation of all these problems and these genocidal logics that persist within these systems. And we try to find ways to kind of figure out how to adjust and calibrate so that they're not as, not as murderous or genocidal or white supremacists. And that continues to fail, right? That continues to fail us. And I think that we should stop making distinctions about specific deputy gangs and understand the entire system of LAPD, of LASD, of all police is a system of gang violence, a system of terrorism meant to control people in our communities. And this is an act, when those folks are killed, it's an act of community terror. So we're all affected by this in our communities, working-class racialized people. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Lionel Mars. You're unmuted. Please go ahead.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for having this presentation tonight. Um, I'd like to first of all, thank Serise for her work and for being courageous. And I'd like to make a comment about what's going on. I studied sociology and I also rep a social groups and in-groups and out-groups. And I believe that any kind of social groups such as cliques or gangs within law enforcement is very counterproductive. It is contradictory, is not productive at all because it runs against what law enforcement ought to be neutral and apolitical, not engage in social deviance, not to engage in gang-like activities because it only hurts the reputation, the image of law enforcement. And the people had enough of that. And we want to see systematic cultural changes internally and externally. And if Alex Villanueva, Dr. Villanueva does not change anything, then I believe that the Justice Department under Eric Garland should take over the LASD or the state because the county needs more help from the federal and state level. Because Dr. Villanueva has not done enough and I'm very disappointed that he has a doctor's degree in a public administration. He ought to know better. I'm very disappointed that somebody with a master's or doctor's, doctor's degree does not cooperate with the civilian oversight committee. I'm very disappointed. He should know better and I'm very disappointed that he has not done enough to make significant changes. And I do believe that the county should do more and, and I support your efforts to make those changes happen. Thank you. And I yield the balance of my time. God bless and Happy New Year.
Paula Broker, you're unmuted. Please go ahead, Paula.
Yes, can you hear me? This is Paula's better half.
We do hear you.
My son was killed in an officer-involved shooting, not in the LA area, but in Northern California. And my question to you all in the panel is, is there any indication of a nationwide, or statewide at least, or nationwide connection between these police officer gangs? Are they communicating um, either surreptitiously or out in the open with each other regarding their goals and objectives? And if so, um, you know, what should be done to stop that and, and the opinion of the experts? And, and also, I think I'm piggybacking what the last caller might have said, you know, where are federal and state officials? Where are Merrick Garland and Governor Newsom and Rob Bonta regarding the, these gangs? These uh, police gangs, which are just frankly un-American as well as impossibly sickening? So um, I, that was my question primarily. Is there any indication that this is statewide, nationwide um, movement amongst police officers? Thank you.
Next we will hear from Douglas Jessup. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, Douglas.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello? Oh, so my name's Douglas Jessup. I, I advocate in a lot of spaces, but today I'm coming just as a civilian. I think what, like after listening to all of these different testimonies, I think one thing that makes it difficult to actually hold their sheriffs accountable is they're able to, to hide everything underneath caveats of, well, this person was, there's probable cause here and so forth and so forth. But my situation is I was unlawfully incarcerated. I was enroliously profiled. And then I was unlawfully incarcerated and that happened to me twice and that happened from the sheriffs. So like when I came out here to um, to Los Angeles, it's been, it's literally been non-stop harassment. Like every part of my life has been harassed and sheriffs have been attached to every, literally everything that I'm doing as far as like me just getting, living a regular life and then jumping in the middle of that to try to stop it. And they're stopping it for what? You know, I think the whole LASD gang thing, not only is it un-American, it's inhumane and demonic. It's demonic. I mean, look, if they want to be gang members and they can come out on the streets and figure out what it really is like to be a gang member. But if they're sitting there holding a, holding a badge, you are the last person to be over here entrapping different individuals. I wasn't even like, I'm from Long Beach, but I never lived in Los Angeles. When I came out to Los Angeles, it's been one thing after another. One person thinking I was this, it was just a whole informant scandal all over again. For me being the prison law clerk, understanding what these cases are, for me seeing inmates getting, getting killed by guards after being locked up from the sheriffs. This is something that's very real and very present and it's not changing. We shouldn't have these testimonies of mothers and aunties and, and uncles and fathers about their sons and their children dying because of a, a Los Angeles sheriff, sheriff. I think the solutions that were provided were great and I just, I think this is time to move forward from this.
Alan Datcher, you're unmuted. Please go ahead, Alan.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Alan Datcher uh, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Los Angeles County Youth Commission. Uh, we are one of the county's newest commissions and we're really focused on uh, ensuring that uh, the county's thirty-seven-plus departments and related agencies, especially the sheriff's department, ensures that we, that the voices of young people, the two-point-two million young people in our county impact the policies, the programs, and the services of that department. I just wanted to say uh, thank you to the CLC, to the presenters, uh, and those who made public comment tonight. I also just wanted to kind of pose the question that I think that the voices of young people are still missing out of the public safety conversation. Uh, I think even given the recent narratives around uh, the increase in crimes and smashing grabs, I think a lot of uh, organizations and well, well-meaning uh, government bodies are talking about young people without young people. Uh, I think that the impacts of sheriff gangs, deputy gangs uh, definitely impact young people. And I think we also need to highlight and elevate the conversation around how uh, these, these illegal groups impact both schools, juvenile halls, camps, and how that culture actually further traumatizes our young people. And so I just encourage this body, uh, we are willing to partner. We have fifteen young people on our youth commission, uh, several of whom have uh, interacted with the sheriffs and the LAPD. Uh, we have young people who have also been involved in our uh, juvenile justice and our child welfare system that are ready to partner and to try to at least uh, increase the voices of young people in this matter. Uh, I look forward to partnering with you all and thank you. I submit the rest of my time.
Thank you so much for that. And let me just say that we would be happy to um, partner and hear from uh, the young people that you work with. Uh, we are actively um, for, for one, we are actively collecting statements from the public. But in addition to that, of course, we, we would love to, to have conversations about how um, the sheriff's department is impacting uh, young people in their communities. Whether it's related to deputy gangs or just uh, the sheriff's department's operations more, more generally. Um, so thank you so much for that invitation. Uh, Jennifer, we can call the next speaker. Thank you.
Laura Shark, you're unmuted. Please go ahead, Laura.
Can you, can you hear me?
No.
Yes. Okay. Um, so I record uh, law enforcement and I have a YouTube channel and I recorded the video of Christopher Bailey. And which it took almost a year to the day for the lawyer to find, but he was beaten by LASD deputies um, over a traffic violation. Uh, I mean, it was, it's horrific. I mean, but they, I, I record uh, deputies several times a week, you know, for police accountability. Um, I say that kind of, but I feel like changes, you know, things that are being said will be done to make reforms or just, I don't know, it just seems like not much. I, I don't, I don't know the solution really. I just want to be able to be um, show people and the public and everything what's happening with these deputies in real life, you know? I mean, people can talk about uh, you know, read, read a story or something, but I, I have real-time video and I always allow it to be available, you know, to the families or whoever. I mean, what happened to Christopher Bailey doesn't happen to everybody, but you know, just one is, is too many. But you know, just the, the violation of people's rights, uh, you know, I mean, they pull people over for nothing. Oh, before my time, if I want to say a special thank you to Ms. Castle, I really appreciate the work that you've done. I've been following you for a little while and I, you know, I, yeah, I really appreciate what you do. I hope I get to meet you someday. Yeah, I just wanted to come in here and say that, you know, uh, these things are happening and I just don't see it getting better, but I'm going to keep documenting and hopefully, you know, my video gets to the right people. Okay. Thank you.
Next we will hear from Carolyn Aggleston. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, Carolyn.
Yes, good evening. Thank you so much for uh, allowing me to speak. I'm from the League of Women Voters for LA County. We had sent a letter to you uh, earlier identifying our support for sheriff accountability for eliminating the deputy gangs. And I wanted to ask just a few things uh, of the commission, if somebody can report at some point about Senate Bill Two and the police, uh, peace officer certification and particularly the immunity provision. And if that might make uh, that might be possible to, uh, for the commission to use to help it in this work with this deputy gang problem. And the second question I wanted to ask is ideas about how we might uh, do a better job of protecting whistleblowers in the sheriff's department? Because that is a particular problem if there's going to be retaliation uh, by whistleblowers and that will decrease the number of people who are willing to come forward. And so can we come up with a system that assists in uh, protecting their, uh, their lives in, in some cases? I do want to commend you for your work. I appreciate so the, uh, the work that has been done and the league is very interested in uh, participating in, in ways that we might help. I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
From Harvey Sherman, you're unmuted. Please go ahead, Harvey.
Thank you. Um, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'd like to thank the commissioners for putting together this special uh, meeting related to deputy gangs. I'd like to applaud the panelists uh, for invaluable work that's being done in this area. Uh, I follow along with it, with your work regularly. Uh, I am a deputy public defender for the county of Los Angeles, currently assigned to the Law Enforcement Accountability Unit. Uh, we're deeply concerned with the ongoing problems of sheriff's gangs proliferating throughout the sheriff's department. But what we find most frustrating is that there are so few tools in the toolbox to be able to provide accountability for the sheriff's department. The Civilian Oversight Commission, the Office of the Inspector General, each given duties, each given powers, and completely ignored, cast aside by the sheriff because he is an independently elected official. And that is the crux, the problem. How do you bring to heel somebody who will not provide accountability for the misdeeds of his employees? When he simply can say, the voters put me in here, they're the only ones who can take me out. And of course, we also don't have recall. It seems that uh, civil judgments are the only way to make a statement. But as long as the county pays for the, for punitive damages against deputies and deputies are allowed to, and we use qualified immunity to reduce things, there's no way to affect a deputy's paycheck. And until we are able to affect the ability for a deputy to continue to engage in misconduct while still being paid a full salary, we will never get any changes in the sheriff's department. I'm hoping that this commission and the OIG will, at some point in the near future, be able to get the tools to be able to bring some accountability to the sheriff's department. Thank you.
You're from George Lopez. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, George.
Hello, I was just wondering if anyone had any insight uh, pertaining to gang activity, gang activity or corruption within the Marina Del Rey Sheriff's Department, uh, specifically possibly Deputy Cortez. Uh, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Valerie Vargas. Please go ahead, Valerie.
Good evening. Uh, can you hear me? Uh, yeah. Uh, so my name's Valerie Vargas. Uh, I'm the surviving relative, one of the surviving relatives of Anthony Vargas who was killed by East Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. You know, I want to thank, I want to thank the commission board for, for holding this uh, this meeting tonight and also the panelists. Uh, thank you for all your work that you've been doing within the past few years. You know, when it comes to the topic of deputy gangs, it's something that we've been talking about for the past three years. And I've, I'm really interested on, on doing it outside of these online meetings. You know, it's, it's time to move forward with all of the statistics and all of the reports that we have. There's been years of testimony from the families. There's been reports being done. Uh, there's been work from uh, Helen Jones, whose, whose son was killed in Central Jail twelve years ago, who's been talking about the deputy gangs. We need to see action. You know, it's crucial. Like this is our lives that, that we're talking about and that are being impacted by these rogue cops. I do want to also take a moment to recognize the work that we've been doing within the past, the past year alone. We've completely changed the narrative that's been, the language that's been uh, uh, said on, on these meetings. You know, we went from cliques to subgroups to we reference them as gangs now. So it's a victory in that everyone feels like, you know, nothing's really moving forward. I just really wish that, that we take more action and I'd like to see something done other than just sitting on the other side of these computers doing testimony after testimony after testimony. Love you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we will hear from Jade Elliston. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, Jade.
Hi, my name is Jade Elliston. I am the sister of Jamal Simpson, who was murdered August first, twenty nineteen by Deputy Gregory Van Hosen. He shot my brother a number of twenty times, standing over his body, shooting him numerous of times while he was already deceased, handcuffed. I would like to give a special thanks to Serise Castell for bringing me here tonight, shedding light on my brother's death because everything has been swept up under the rug by the deputy department. Me or my family have yet to hear from Detective Lowler or Detective Bragg two years later about what happened to my brother. They put false information in the media saying that he was uh, involved in a deputy-involved shooting. There's no finding of that from our private investigator. My brother was murdered in cold blood, okay? And when my family got on the scene, we were laughed at. We were taped off more and more away from his body that stood in the middle of Seventy-first and Brynhurst for eleven hours. They illegally removed cameras from neighbors' houses that caught footage of the murder that Gregory Van Hosen committed on my brother. No EMTs were called. that Gregory Van Hosen committed on my brother. No EMTs were called on the scene to help him. He was 21 years old when he shot him a number of 20 times, resulting in him losing a finger, a finger, a left finger on his index, okay? And for me, that is only because somebody has their hands up. And I would like to just understand why there's no justice. Why is this man still working in the field, in the LA community, in these LA cities, to be killing these kids, black children? He has killed not once, but twice already. He killed A.J. Weber and turned around and murdered my brother five months later.
And next, we will hear from Jonathan Pelz. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi, I just wanted to briefly talk about the LASD host team, because I've heard some rhetoric from county officials. Also, I'm a journalist with KnockLA as well, because I've heard from county officials and city officials that they're somehow separate from this issue of deputy gangs. But I did a bunch of reporting on Veterans Row while LASD host was out there. And when they came out to sweep the entire encampment, there were other members of the LASD that came with them, and some of those members had Fort Apache badges. I'd also like to say I've heard from county and city officials, as the LASD host team is being deployed to Skid Row currently, that the LASD host team is not to arrest people. But during my reporting on Veterans Row, me and another reporter witnessed an unhoused veteran being violently 5150'd by about 20 LASD deputies. Furthermore, the LASD host team, when they go to sweep these encampments or do engage with unhoused people, they typically bring a camera crew with them to campaign with Sheriff Villanueva and his campaign team, which is Jessica Mizels and Javier Gonzalez. So it doesn't seem to me that these two issues can be separated, that we can accept a third deputy gang in the department, but that the LASD host team is somehow separate from them while they're engaging in these activities. Furthermore, they have a team member who has a video camera, and he walks around and films activists and journalists who come to any encampments where the LASD host team is at. He just films people the entire time. That's his function. So I'd just like to let the Civilian Commission know about that, and to thank you so much for your time and for supporting Cerise's work, which is obviously amazing. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person we'll hear from for public comment is Paulette Dunn Sanders. You're unmuted. Please go ahead, Paulette.
Hello, can you hear me?
We do.
Okay, thank you for accepting my call again. I just have a question for men that have been incarcerated by being targeted by Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, who are now serving time falsely on the Gulf Gun charges put on them by the gangs of LASD. Also, I want to share with everyone in the audience or on this call conference that I received a letter from Alex Padilla, who is the United States Senator, on August 1st about HR 1280. And these are his words: "I believe that police officers' disproportionate use of force against people of color is a stain on our nation. We must work to ensure accountability for police officers. That is why I am proud of our 1280, the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act, among other provisions. HR 1280 would end qualified immunity in order to better hold law enforcement officers accountable. HR 1280 has passed the House of Representatives, and I look forward to taking up this incredibly important legislation in the Senate. I am also proud to have introduced the Accountability for Law Enforcement Officers Act, Senate 2103, which will provide individuals the right to sue federal law enforcement officers and agencies in civil court for violations of constitutional rights. In order to build trust in our justice system, we must give individuals the right to hold federal law enforcement agencies accountable when the actions of their officers lead to a violation of civil rights. This legislation is currently awaiting consideration by the Senate Judiciary Committee, of which I am a member. Please know that I appreciate hearing your thoughts on this issue, and I will continue to support legislation."
That does conclude your time.
I'm sorry.
No problem. We'll move on to the very last speaker is Elena Gonzalez. Elena, please go ahead with your comment. Elena Gonzalez.
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, yes. No, I just wanted to say that the Lancaster station needs to be investigated, period. All this corruption and harassment, the violent stories of civilians and the new deputies needs to stop. Hearing all these stories and testimonies have been very heartbreaking to listen to. Angel Reynosa, hang in there. If you're listening to me, I pray that you get your justice soon. I pray for all of these families to get their justice soon. And thank you for letting me talk. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Public comment.
Thank you very much to everyone who participated today. I think today is one of our highest-attended town halls ever. So I think that suggests that the public's very interested in this work and is very interested in, and not only is interested, but is demanding that we get to the bottom of this and produce meaningful reform and change. I want to thank the family members, folks who have been impacted by police violence and police killings for speaking about your experiences. I know this must be difficult to have to relive these traumatic moments, and we really appreciate what you've shared because it really helps to ground and inform the questions that we need to be asking and the areas that we need to pursue in terms of our investigation. There were a number of questions asked. Is there a statewide connection between law enforcement gangs? What can federal and state officials do to investigate these matters? Some speakers on the panel, as well as in public comment, you know, made some hints in terms of the answer to that question. In what way does SB2, the police decertification law, interact with the work that we and others are doing on sheriff's gangs or other law enforcement gangs? How can we improve protections for whistleblowers and engage in meaningful structural reform? We believe that these kinds of hearings are a part of these structural reform because transparency, I think, can lead to meaningful change. I mean, it can inform our policies around public safety in LA County and with regard to the Sheriff's Department. As far as the Civilian Oversight Commission, we are continuing to seek enforcement of our sheriff's subpoenas to the sheriff and other sheriff's officials. We are in the process now of asking the Board of Supervisors to grant us the authority to hire special counsel to do a thorough internal investigation, which, as Ms. Castle noted, has not yet happened. The RAND report did not go as thoroughly into the department operations as one would have hoped, and we want to do that. And so we have heard from county council that they might object to some kinds of relationships with outside counsel, and we're going to try to get around that by asking the board to act. So that's where we are. And we're also, in terms of where we are coming to the end of this town hall, but before we close, I thought I'd invite each of the commissioners, if they had some closing comments that they wanted to give, an opportunity to give those comments. So maybe if we take, you know, roughly 30 seconds each or a minute each to just sort of give concluding thoughts, I'd welcome you to do that. I've already given mine, and so I'll just go down the list. I'll turn first to Commissioner Giggins.
Yeah, this was a really important evening. I really appreciated the variety of voices who have come out tonight, and I hope everybody keeps coming back until we really make inroads on this serious, serious topic.
Thank you, Commissioner Giggins. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you. I think deputy gangs are a symbol of serious lack of accountability of the Sheriff's Department, which is why I think it's so important that this organization focus on it. I think they show why there is a resistance to constitutional policing and de-escalation. And so despite the sheriff's refusal to engage with us, we have to keep trying to engage with him to do something about these gangs, which have persisted for so long.
Commissioner Harris.
Just appreciated the opportunity to join with everyone tonight, hear some of the new voices that we hadn't heard before. It's very good to hear all the input from all the people, and hopefully we can do this more. Thank you.
And the last word from Commissioner Commons will go to Commissioner Rubin, who is the Chair of the Deputy Gangs Ad Hoc Committee.
Thank you so much, and I want to join my thanks to the terrific panelists and the issues that they discussed. And also, again, so many of the public comments I thought were very meaningful and raised a number of issues that I believe this commission should explore. Certainly, one of them is Department of Justice federal involvement, federal oversight. And I look back on the consent decree against LAPD, which turned out to be very successful. So there has been much that has given us a great deal to think about, and I look forward to exploring all those. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubin. Thank you to all the commissioners who attended today. Commissioner Giggins, Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Kennedy. Thank you again to Commissioner Rubin. Thank you to our panelists, Cerise Castle, Rebecca Brown, Commissioner Kennedy, and Mr. Vincent Miller. Our next meeting will be in January. Because of some staffing shortage issues, we will not be having a full commission meeting next week. However, we will be posting what is roughly a scorecard in terms of recommendations that the commission has made over the course of the last couple of years, including during the pandemic and where the Sheriff's Department is, and we look forward to sharing that with the public. Our next meeting, therefore, will be in January, and we look forward to talking about additional issues that are related to deputy gangs, but aren't exclusively focused on deputy gangs, because this is a big department with a lot of challenges and a lot of issues, and we need to be talking about all of them. So we will publish our January agenda in mid-January, and we hope that those of you who were able to attend today will continue to engage with the commission. If you'd like to submit comments about deputy gangs, please visit our website at coc.lacounty.gov, or email us, or upload statements on the webpage. You can also contact us on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. So thank you all so much for joining us. And with that, we're about three minutes over, but I will conclude our town hall there. Thank you, everybody, for joining and for participating.